Okay. We have. We have one board member who's right there, who's joining us via Zoom, I guess. And I think we have another board member, Ginny, who is going to be joining us at some point. And we have some mystery people joining us there. Okay. As Chairman of the Hampton School Board, I've determined that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, that to properly ensure the safety of the public and that of several of the board members who are within the CDC guidelines needing to take special precautions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming we are utilizing a teleconference service for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public may join this electronic meeting by calling 1-857-444-0744 and use the code 649427. Okay. Do we have Ginny yet? Ginny, are you with us yet? No, I don't think so. Okay. Board updates. Wellness. Andrea?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Ginny, is that you? No? Great. School Boards Association. I attended the annual conference, which was not last Saturday, but the Saturday before. It was done remotely. They have a list of the, I think there were 12 new resolutions on the New Hampshire School Board Association website, if you want to look at them. Let's see. Recreation Department, Andrea?
Yeah, the Recreation Department is starting to plan for the summer camps and activities. Renee would like to meet as soon as possible, and it may take a few meetings, to talk with, obviously, school personnel to get permission maybe for the use of some of our facilities. We'll have to watch how that all goes as the numbers in state guidelines seem to be in flux here and there. And also currently, they have signups available for an acrylic painting class for high schoolers during February vacation.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Policy, anything? No? Ginny, if you're with us, PTA? Okay. And curriculum? Andrea?
Not.
I think you're muted.
I think our teachers continue to work very long. Our job is always trying to creatively and effectively deliver engaging lessons that are personalized to meet the needs of all of our diverse learners, both in and out of school. I know they're also going through data from mid-year testing so that they can continue to help, to evaluate, to help students with support and interventions. And I don't know when this fits in, but I'm going to plug it in here, if you don't mind.
Mine unmuted.
Good luck to our grade eight students, because I know they've started the process, I believe, tonight, choosing their high school courses and starting that transition to the next exciting stage of their academic career. That's it.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is public comment, and I'm going to defer that just for a minute, because I want to go to the next item, and it's actually under new business. And we want to thank Pepper Ring, who is this? Hi, Ginny, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Well, we're just, we're skipping down a little bit. I want to, and I'm sure you do too, thank Pepper for her, I believe it's 12 years, 12 years on the school board. And before that, how many years was it in the center school classroom? Quite a few. Yeah? So best of luck. I'm sure you're going to be able to. You and Jay to enjoy some warmer weather?
Yes.
I'd ask you to give a speech, but I know you don't like to give speeches.
You know, it was, it was a great journey. I mean, we started out in '21, and here we are in our own '90. I mean, that was a wonderful thing for us.
Well.
And everybody, you know, everybody's, it's a wonderful place.
And.
It is.
I know you went to Winnicott. Did you go to Hampton Schools before Winnicott?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, Center School, yes, one, yep. Eighth grade graduation was right here.
That's quite a, that's quite a journey.
It was the first one that, you know, when it was built. So we did our graduation. Yeah, yes.
Quite a journey.
The one too. Yes.
Good for you. And thank you. And thank you.
Well, it was, not this part.
The this.
Yeah.
Okay. So. Oh, okay.
He's well wrapped.
Nice. Nice.
I know. Yes. Charlotte Pepper Ring, Hampton School Board, 2009, 2021. Wow.
Nice.
And it has. It's been a wonderful journey.
Good for you, Pepper.
You are so well worth it. Thank you.
So at this time, and this goes along with one of our items about our district response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, I am going to open the floor to comments from the public, and I'm positive there are some. I would ask people from the public to keep it to around three minutes. I don't have a stopwatch, but I can tell. And Greg, are you going to let me know when they call in or if anybody call? LJ, do we have any?
There are currently none.
Currently none. Okay. Well, if some people call in, we will certainly put them in. We have some letters of retirement in our packet. I'm sure you. Hello? Okay. We have letters from. Thank you, Pepper. Connie Levin. And Connie's been here how many years? A lot. What page is that?
Page number one. 36 years, Jen.
36 years. So if we get a motion to accept her, oh, it's right here, it's right in front of me. Motion to accept her letter. Frank, second. Pepper. All those in favor? Andrea?
Aye.
And Ginny?
Aye.
I'm going to offer, can we accept that with appreciation? Okay? Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And the next one is Victoria Williams. Motion. Moved Pepper. Second.
I'll second it.
Frank?
With appreciation.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ginny.
Aye.
We have a letter of retirement from Sue Antico, Marston School Guidance. 27 years. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Moved. Ginny, second.
Second.
With appreciation.
Frank, with appreciation. All those in favor? Ginny, yes?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think we had one more. Lisa Wenger from Hampton Academy. Been here for 20 years. Motion to accept hers.
With appreciation.
With appreciation. Frank, second. Pepper. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. That's that. You have in your packet a list of nominations for the year 21, '22. Does someone want to make a motion to accept those? Moved Pepper. Seconded.
I'll second it.
All right. Frank. Any discussion on that? Now, we should be careful if we're mentioning names, but is there any discussion on that? Andrea, any discussion?
No.
Ginny, anything?
No.
Okay. Then we would, I would have a vote to accept.
Hello?
To accept all of them. Andrea, yes? Ginny?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And that included all administrators, everybody? Okay? Welcome back. That takes care of that. Is somebody trying to talk? No?
We have one.
You have one?
That's correct.
Okay. I said if people called in, we would, we would take them, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hi, Les, Brian Warburton, Chairman of the Budget Committee.
Hi, Brian.
Great job, guys. Les, I just wanted you to know, I just sent an email to Greg in Paris. There's a major loud noise coming over Channel 13 and on the live YouTube on the website. Very, it's real strange. It's a loud noise during the whole thing.
Okay. Right.
Just to let you know, and I got a feeling that may have something to do with people. It's really loud. I tested it, Les, out on the website too.
Okay.
It's just like a constant loud buzz. So I just wanted you to know that. And Pepper, congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Greg is going into the other room to see what he can do about it.
All right. Thank you, Les.
Thank you, Brian. LJ, was there anybody else who called in?
No others currently.
Okay. Let us know. Okay. Mr. Lannan, do you have anything for us other than what's in your report? Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Tim?
Yep, looks good.
And I'm, I'm hoping after we get to the principals' reports that you folks can make it home, whether it's not really that good. Mr. Sadler, you have anything for us other than what's in your, other than what's in your report? Any questions for Nathan? Okay. And Mr. O'Connor? Anything? Yeah? Anybody have anything for Dave? Ginny?
No.
Andrea? No?
No.
No? Okay. I'm sorry.
We have box tops and like that. Do we have to?
Yes, we do need to do, we have a lot of, don't let me forget.
Okay. Well, I just happened, when I was flipping, I just happened to see.
Dr. De Silva, Silva Napton, anything for us? Any, any questions for, for her? Whoa. Are you still working on that issue or? Okay. All right. Greg, did you have anything for technology? Okay. And Mr. Lasard, you have anything for us? Keith? Nothing outstanding? Okay. Mary, anything? Okay. LJ, was that someone calling in?
That they're running in on you.
Okay. They, they can go ahead.
Hello?
Hello? You're on. We're hearing you.
Oh, hi. Is this a board meeting?
It is, and you're, and you're on.
I am so sorry. I'm just trying to figure that out.
That's okay.
Hi. I've just got a statement to make if I could.
Could we get your name?
Hopefully, I'll get through it without getting too emotional.
Could we get your name?
My name is Dr. Keith Dominic, and I come to the discussion wearing many hats. A Hampton parent, a Hampton pediatrician, a Hampton baseball coach, a Hampton soccer coach, a Hampton taxpayer, and a contributing member of the Hampton community for the last 11 years. Let me begin first by saying, there are so many incredible people in our community that have stepped up for our children and have risen to the occasion. So many, many teachers, school staff members, parents, grandparents, neighbors, small business owners, medical personnel, custodians, and caretakers have made significant sacrifices for the sake of our children. These people are heroes, running toward the fire when everyone else is running away. We now need our school board and school administrators to rise to the occasion and answer the plea of our children. I stand before you with no hidden agenda, no political attachments, no union attachments. I stand before you with a simple agenda. Advocate, advocate for our kindergarten through eighth-grade students that are suffering dearly and have no voice. I am advocating for the parents who clearly voiced their preferences this past summer regarding return to school and were completely ignored. I am advocating for those same parents and many, many, many new additional parents who are now asking for our school board and administration to do their job and get these schools, excuse me, get these kids back in school full-time. I am advocating for the hundreds of parents of SAU 90 that have seen some frightening changes in their children during this time, but feel they may not have a voice or that change is impossible. As a board-certified pediatrician and a member of the American Academy of Pediatrics, I have dedicated my entire life to the health and well-being of our children. I have been on the quote-unquote "front lines," although, side note, nothing close to what, you know, our ICU and, you know, cities are going through, of course. I have been on the quote-unquote "front lines" of this pandemic for the last 11 months. I have a unique and specialized perspective. I stand before you in hopes that you can make the right decision, that we can allow those families who want a full-time, in-person education for their child the opportunities to receive one. Last spring, everything was new and scary. Last spring, we were just trying to do our best. We know much more now than we did 11 months ago. There have been many studies performed that reinforce the fact that our schools are safe for students and teachers. The latest example, a recent study reported January 29, 2021, in the CDC's MMWR, that is Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report. This is a study done from August 31st to November 29th of last year with students and staff members at 17 Wisconsin schools, from kindergarten to grade 12, not just eight. During this time, the incidents, that's new cases of COVID-19, were monitored in students and staff members. The study showed that new cases among teachers and staff members were 37% lower than the general population. The study showed that among 191 cases identified in students and staff members, only seven or 3.7% were linked to in-school spread. The study also showed during 13 weeks of in-person learning, seven of 4,876 students and zero of 654 staff members contracted COVID-19. Teacher vaccination has been expressed by administration to be a limiting factor. We, of course, want our teachers vaccinated as soon, as soon as possible. There is plenty of evidence to support, however, the fact that teachers can return safely to school without vaccination. We are far past the point in this pandemic where the benefits of keeping our kids out of school for the safety of others outweighs the repercussions for our children. It is clear and obvious that the repercussions of our children not being back full-time in school greatly outweighs the need to keep excluding our children from school for fear of COVID in our schools. I would estimate in the last two to three months, I have seen at least 10 patients with significant mental health concerns for each case of COVID-19. These are children who are depressed, anxious, angry, hopeless. And these are only the children who find their way into a doctor's office. What about the children who are left at home all day because their parents must work or lose their house? What about the children who are being abused or neglected due to having to stay out of school? I can guarantee you that the real-life status of our children is even worse than what makes it into the pediatrician's office. We missed an opportunity this past fall that has cost our children dearly. With zero cases of COVID-19 in the town of Hampton, the Board still decided not to send our kids back full-time in person. With zero cases of COVID-19 in the town of Hampton, school opening was delayed two weeks. With zero cases of COVID-19 in the town of Hampton, the Board voted for the hybrid model, which according to my infectious disease colleague, makes the least sense to protect students and staff. We, as parents, were given a pseudo-opportunity to express our opinions through a survey this past summer. Our responses were completely ignored, and there have been zero subsequent surveys asking parents how they feel about returning to school. The parent survey this past summer showed, A, just 7% of SAU 90 parents, quote, "would not send my child to school." B, just 4% of my fellow Marston parents, quote, "would not send their child to school." C, the majority of parents did not want SAU 90 to consider a hybrid model. D, 64.5% identified significant barriers to remote learning. The parents of SAU 90 cannot be ignored anymore. It is time to stop hiding behind excuses. It is time to stop hiding behind desks. It is time to stop hiding behind unions. It is time to stop hiding behind bureaucracy or small-town politics. Members of the school board, you are here to do the best you can for the students and parents of this community. You must vote to allow families who want their children to return to school in person full-time that opportunity. Those families who wish to continue remote learning should also have that opportunity. We can absolutely make this happen. You failed our children and our parents this past fall. It's imperative that you do not fail us again, and you rise to the occasion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public input?
None so far.
Okay. Let us know. Okay. Did you want to respond to that?
Um, not at this time.
Okay.
I think we're going to have another, we're going to have a conversation about that. It's on our agenda.
It is.
And we have several things that are on our agenda that we would like to address tonight that the leadership team is here for.
Yep.
So I think we should definitely do that.
Okay.
That was in the agenda.
All right.
I'd like to make one statement just for clarification purposes. Based on a survey by WMUR, Channel 9, in the last 22 hours, Hampton, New Hampshire has 58 cases of active COVID, 880 diagnosed since the pandemic began, and it's been 22 hours when you left.
Okay. We had some, we had some checks that we had to accept. Can we put them all into one mo, I'm sorry. Andrea?
Yeah. Before we move on, I just want to know, has, has Dr. Dominic received the, the matrix that we got, or should he receive the matrix that we got regarding the level of school impact as far as transitioning between methods of instruction? And I guess, Dr. Costa, have you, I'm, I'm going to go on the premise that you have, because I know you and you're very, you know, organized and, you know, look at all the details, but at the, the level of community transmission on our matrix and the transitioning between methods of instruction, do we meet, do we meet the criteria that has been set by the New Hampshire Division of Public Health Services and the Bureau of Infectious Disease Control? Do we meet the criteria to move to the next level between methods of instruction?
Andrea, could I respond? I'm going to ask Karen Brand and Kathy Connolly to come up. We, I am in weekly conversations with the nurses, who are in weekly conversations with the Department of Health and Human Services, and Dr. Chan, Dr. Talbot, and I believe Dr. Daly. And I, I believe we can give you a very in-depth or very, we can answer that question.
So Andrea, I just want to recap. The question is, are we meeting the criteria to move ahead?
So, so as we think about the matrix for changing of where we are to going into a different mode of full-in-person, what is preventing us from doing so?
Well, this morning on Channel 9 News announced that there's a handful of laboratories that were unable to submit the latest reports, so that 58 looks good, but I am guessing tomorrow will be much higher. But I, I am guessing tomorrow will be much higher because that handful of labs was not part of that 58. What we look for and have always looked for since March 13th is we follow the CDC guidance. Which is supported by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Public Health. That guidance, um, the CDC has updated that guidance December of 2020. Um, the New Hampshire Department of Public Health has updated theirs in January of 21. They both state that mitigating, um, factors plus vaccination are all working together to help minimize the risk. However, they have not changed any of their mitigating factors to move us ahead. Six foot spacing, six foot distancing, desks six feet apart. Um, very stringent, um, cleaning during the day. As well as very stringent deep cleaning during the week. Cohorts without mixing. Uh, hand hygiene, minimizing any, um, congregate, um, gatherings. Um, and then of course we have the vaccinations, um, as well as they are still frowning on. Um, any unnecessary, non-essential traveling outside New England. Yes, the vaccinations will help. The vaccinations is an additional layer to helping us keep the risk and the spread of the virus down. Now, social distancing alone and spacing of the desk has to stay six feet. Since March, we did extensive measuring in each school, how we can best accommodate all of the kids in. And still maintain six feet without mixing cohorts. The decision was unanimous. We spatially cannot meet that criteria. Uh, we're meeting all criteria, mask wearing whenever we're inside. We're protecting kids in their classroom when they're eating to protect the kids who are identified as at risk for anaphylaxis. We are protecting the children who choose to be in person, who have very compromised, some severely compromised immunosuppressive issues. Um, so with all of that, and again, looking at the CDC from 2020. And the New Hampshire Department of, uh, Public Health, uh, January 21. We cannot move forward right now. That's not to say we're not gonna move forward in a couple of months. But until that criteria changes. We just don't have the ability to move forward.
Can you do it into the microphone? Sorry.
Just thinking off the top of my head of the recent positive cases that we've had. Having this hybrid model has saved us from closing down classrooms and cohorts. Because we go back to the contact tracing and we look at how. Who was the child next to during their infectious period? And just off the top of my head, the last five or so cases were like, nope, nope, no school contact. Had you have double the kids in the classroom? I feel we'd be closing down temporarily and reopening back up, causing confusion and, and chaos, honestly. That's just what I've witnessed recently over the last few months, so.
I think of the last, um, four cases that we've had and we were in contact quite a bit over the weekend. And we were again today. Um, those cases, there was not a need for contact tracing because of when they were diagnosed. And when they were last in school. The hybrid model helps us because it gives us that additional time between when the cohorts are in school. And that is what has saved us. One of the things I have heard from, from parents and what I've heard from teachers who teach in other districts. One teacher said, who was a Hampton parent, she's very grateful for the consistent schedule. And her district, the word she used was whipsawed. That her district, because of contact tracing, has whipsawed between in-person, remote. In-person, remote. And she said, as a teacher, it's very inconsistent and it's very difficult and very hard on the children. Um, we know for children, consistency is pretty important. Predictable routines, knowing that what's gonna happen on Monday, Tuesday, knowing what's gonna happen Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We know this is not ideal. We know it's not. We know in-person learning is the best. But we are, unfortunately, we are in the middle of a pandemic. And we are following the Department of Health and Human Services guidelines. We talk every week with Dr. Chan, Dr. Talbot. And Dr. Daly. And I speak with my nurses every Wednesday to talk about what comes out of those meetings. Where are we? What is, what is CDC? What is DTH saying? Where are we? What do we do? What are the, you know? We talk about this. This is not something that's a, that's a, that's not lost on us. In fact, we, we talk about it seven days a week. And you know from my letters that you get from me over the weekend, this is on our minds every day. This is not something any of us take lightly. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have any more public comment?
Currently, there's none.
Okay, thank you. Frank?
Back with the nurses. Uh, question for you guys is, well. I, I listened to what Dr. Dominic said, okay? And I think there's some validity in his argument regarding the social and emotional needs of these kids. How are we addressing that now? Have we seen any of these issues develop? In the school?
Are you asking us if we've seen, um, children that we've known in past years with new anxiety or, or depression? Um, I can say that I do have some students with anxiety this year caused by COVID. Um, in talking with their parents, COVID in itself, um, has triggered new anxieties. Um, I cannot say with 100% certainties that the kids who are depressed or have new anxieties. Is because of being hybrid. Um, or because they've chosen to stay home and be fully remote because of their own emotional choices. Um, but yes, COVID has triggered. Children, um, with anxiety and depression.
So, having said that.
Yep.
Does one outweigh the other?
Medically speaking, from, from a nurse's point of view, is that the goal in mind every single day is what can we do to provide a safe? And learning environment that's equitable to every child with their own physical or mental needs. We do the best we can and it's an emotional issue. So it always comes down to what the, um, specialists at the New Hampshire Department of Public Health and, and Health and Human Services. Tell us. Their data, their reading, they are our guidance and that's how we choose it. We do the best we can to help those kids with the emotional issues every day. We do our best to help those kids with emotional issues before COVID hit. Um, I don't know if that's the answer you're looking for, but that's the best I can tell you.
Well, it, it seemed to me.
Yep.
Okay, yeah. During this pandemic, okay, in the beginning.
Okay, hold off, hold off just, hold off just a minute. Go ahead, Frank.
It, it would seem to me that. You've got the social and emotional needs of kids that's increasing. And we got covert, on the other hand, which seems to be decreasing due to a number of factors. The inoculation or the vaccine, if you want to call it, okay? And as we're moving forward, isn't there an opportunity to look at? Other alternatives to bring these kids back together?
Frank, I think, I think we're gonna get there. I guess, we are gonna get there. We're gonna talk about that tonight.
In a few minutes.
In a few minutes.
Okay.
I, I hear where you're coming from.
Thank you.
Karen, thank you.
And LJ, did you say there was someone who wanted to make a comment? Okay. You're on. Hello? Is she there?
I have another caller. Abby is on the line as well.
Okay.
All right, Abby.
Hi there, um, thanks for taking my question. I just wanted to, um.
Can, can we just get, can we just get your name first?
My name is Abby. Can you hear me?
Yeah, do you have a last name?
I, I do, absolutely. It's Marceau. M-A-R-C-E-A-U.
Thank you.
Of course. Um, so I just wanted to, thank you for taking my call. Um, just wanted to ask. Um, each and every one of you, I know it's hard to hear the meeting first of all, but I wanted to find out. Um, have you, all of you considered the impact on the social and emotional? Well, the social emotional impact on these children because I'll tell you right now, it's not going well. So I just want to know if anybody has any thoughts on, how about the children that have no support at home or no environment? Where they can learn and be online with the proper supervision?
Okay. Anybody want to respond? No?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I think each one of us is, has considered the social emotional issues. And, um, being in the field that I'm in right now, I, they hit me in the face. But we have to weigh the social emotional. We have worked with it. We have tried to do programs with it. We do realize there are still children that are not getting some support. And I think Dr. Costa is trying to figure out how to deal with those children as well. But it has been on the mind of all of us. The other thing is while I recognize masks are important, it makes it very difficult to understand what people are saying. Especially speakers that come up. So I don't know if they want to remove their mask or if you just want to, um, go through with it. But it makes it very difficult for the audience to hear.
It, it does, Ginny. That's why I have mine off, but I'm not gonna force anybody to take theirs off.
Oh, I'm not asking anyone to take theirs off, but I am asking if they could. If they feel comfortable doing it, then please do because it makes their point able to be heard by the audience.
Sure. So we, we, we've had two speakers and I think I can speak for everybody on the board. Um, in, in the last year, there isn't much that we haven't thought of. That we haven't looked at, that we haven't looked at research about, that we haven't, uh, been deluged with. 24 hours a day on CNN or Fox or wherever we get our news. Uh, you know, we're constantly, constantly watching what happens in other school districts and in other states. And you will see some districts start up and then, and then they, they shut down. I have a daughter who's a high school teacher and she's, her, she has a kindergarten daughter. Who, who was sent home from school for 14 days with COVID. And, uh, which meant my daughter had to be home from school for 14 days and teach remotely. And then my daughter was in a classroom where I think two kids came down with COVID and. Pretty much shut the school down. So, um, I, I don't know if there's a right or wrong. I think, um, and I know Lois and her administrative team. Are, are working tirelessly to do the right thing and to the, to do the best thing for the kids that we have in our district. And, uh. You know, we're not gonna give answers that are gonna please people necessarily. But we're gonna give answers that, uh, you know, I can honestly say that I've thought about and that I'm comfortable with. So, uh, I'll turn it over to you, Lois.
Right. So I think at this time, I want.
But I have Abby Marceau again.
Okay, I'm sorry, Lois, I'm sorry. Yes, come, come back on Abby. Um, this is not a, it's, it's public comment, so go ahead.
Yes, so I just wanted to find out, um, based on all the research and data that you guys are collecting and looking at daily. Um, how do you explain that the New York City intercity schools are back in Boston and all of those populated areas as you well? Yet we're in this tiny town with barely any cases and our children are forced to be home three days a week.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
My daughter lives in New York City. Her significant other is a teacher. He has been remote for over six to eight weeks, I would guess, and he is not back. So, and I know that Boston is looking at addressing only those children with significant needs. Those are the only groups that are back. So, I, I think that we, we hear. Abby, I'm not disputing that there are probably some that are back, but I do know New York City is not back yet. And I know that firsthand from my daughter. Um, I'm not disputing that there might be some that are back, but I can speak to Boston and New York City.
How many schools are open on the seacoast? It, SAU 21, Exeter, uh, Portsmouth. Looking at within a, a geographical area of Hampton?
Every, every district in the southeastern portion of the state, and those are the superintendents I meet with monthly. Are all executing different plans. There are some, um, like Dover, who have not been in for most of the year. And I know there's pressure to come back, as is with summers work, right? Um, there are other districts that were late to begin in-person learning. Um, that are, some are in and some are out. It's really a, um, individual district decision, as we know local default in New Hampshire is the New Hampshire way. So it really varies. You also have some, um, districts in New Hampshire that have not been in all year. So it just really varies and so. I think every, every district is a little bit different. And it also really depends on the size of the district, the numbers of students and what they can do. I'll talk about Southampton. It's teeny tiny. They are able to get K-8 in. They've got the space. They're very few. They can do it. I also know that, um, some of our other colleagues in SAU 21 were only here K-4 and their middle school students were not in. We made the decision this summer that we wanted all of our students K-8 to have in-person learning. By only keeping part of your students in, you can spread out and you have more space. To address the things that, uh, Mrs. Brand and Mrs. Connolly spoke about, the social distancing. So there, there is a struggle for Hampton is the numbers, um, that make it challenging. We also are supporting those students that are, that are remote. Um, so you now have some staff that are working remotely to make sure that those students are getting the education that they need as well. So there's also that that we're contending with.
Have we surveyed the parents since, I think we did it back in the summer? Have we done something recently to have an indication on what their feelings are?
We, we know the parents want in-person learning. And my, my, our concern as a leadership team was that we, we, we all want in-person learning. My concern is that if we do that and then we can't deliver it, to Dr. Dominic's point, we can't deliver it. Um, and that's, I think, our concern. I think everybody in this room right now, present people on this board, wants learning five days a week. My, my problem is, is as you heard from our first responders. We can't do it given the size of the buildings and the number of students that we have adhering to social distancing. We even talked about, um, breaking it out into taking our gyms and our cafeterias and converting them to classrooms. We, again, we still don't have the space. We don't have the staffing. Because then you need one, you need additional staff to basically deliver the instruction to all of the students. It's, it's, it's very complex and I can tell you that, um, I did talk extensively with Mrs. Lusar. It was the first conversation we had. We talked about square footage. We talked about can we get, uh, can we break out some of these large spaces to get, you know, 10 students per room? We didn't have the square footage and then we didn't have the staff. So those are the parameters of which we're working in.
Well, with the weather changing, okay, I mean, I know we're in the middle of winter. It's snowing outside. But as we go into the.
But as we go into the third trimester, where the warmer weather and I'm looking at March, April, May, is there any opportunity to get these kids back, you know, i- i- to an outside classroom?
Um, that would involve renting tents. And that was something that we talked about last summer as well. Our issue with that was we couldn't get tents because the restaurants were using tents. Um, and they, and they are, just so you know, Mrs. LaSard, do you remember, I don't mean to drag you into it, but the cost of tents is, is easily thousands of dollars, which, you know, that's something that we can explore. But Keith, you want to address it? But we talked, we talked about tents.
Last, I have another caller.
Great, thank you.
So is that 7,500 until October? Okay, so what happens if we look at April, May and part of June? What would the cost factor be then?
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to figure that out. I mean, I can, I'm all going by what was shared with us when we went and looked for tents. We couldn't find tents in the summer.
Right.
Um, we also, it was very challenging to find tents and we looked at the pricing, it's a lot of money.
Well, o- o- okay. I, I understand what you're saying, but maybe we should look at that and come back with a cost factor at the next meeting?
We could definitely do that.
All right, because we're, we're looking at, it's social emotional issues with kids and we're putting a price tag on it.
Um, right. The, the, the only other issue we have is when we're outside, we have security issues. I mean, we spent so much money to make our buildings secure for the kids when they're in here, that we're just letting them outside with no security. So that's, I mean, we'd have to definitely look at that issue also.
Well, I, I say let's look at that and let's look at the bottom line.
Yes.
I just want to add, speaking for the middle school Hampton Academy students, I have many, many, many children with, um, severe spring allergies that cannot stand to be outside because at the least little breeze starts their eyes watering, their nose watering. They feel like they can't breathe, the asthmatics start to have problems. So I, I, I'm not poo-pooing it. I just want you to keep in mind that it sounds great, but a lot of the children cannot be outside extended during spring due to allergies.
But i- if you identify those kids and put them inside and those kids that have no allergies you put in the tents, you've addressed that issue, correct?
As long as we're not mixing cohorts. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, LJ, did you say we had another caller?
Actually I have two callers. First is Joanne Dominic.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, um, my name is Jill Dominic. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much for taking my call. Um, so I don't have anything officially prepared. Um, I am a social worker, I am a licensed social worker, um, that's my full-time position. So, um, I do have some perspective in terms of mental health, but mainly I'm calling as a mother. Um, my son Dustin is nine, he's in fourth grade. Um, and I am extremely emotional about this and I think that is my point. I think there's, there's a lot of division here. There's a lot of pain for some people that comes out as anger, for some people that comes out as, uh, uh... Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Sorry, it's hard, it's hard to hear on my end. It's hard to hear on my end. Okay, um, I think there's, there's a lot of division here. I think that, um, you know, on social media, it's very easy for people to get carried away. Um, and I think the bottom line is that we all care about our kids. We all want the best for our child and we are all coming at this with different issues. Um, some of us are having children like myself who are having increased anxiety, increased depression. Some families have children with medical concerns, um, or might have older people in the house. And so that's where they're coming at it from. But we all care about our children. We all want the same thing. I think for those of us who feel strongly about trying to be creative and find a way for our kids to be in person, um, it's about having a choice. Because the people who, you know, the parents who choose to have their children home fully remote or hybrid, you know, those are choices, but there hasn't been that choice in place for those of us who see our kids really struggling, um, emotionally here. And so I, I like the direction. It's encouraging to me that the conversation has taken of just trying to think outside the box, um, especially as the weather gets nicer. They'll, they'll always be an obstacle or they'll, they'll always be something that makes it hard, um, to adapt from the school's perspective. And that's very real. But it's been incredibly hard to adapt on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis as parents with children at home, um, when your childcare provider has to be quarantined, when you have to be quarantined, when you're trying to juggle a full-time job, when you have two parents that are working full-time. So we have been navigating difficult challenges all along. And I think from my perspective again, I hate the division, I hate the anger, I hate the back and forth on social media. I just, I love my child, I want what, want what's best for him. And I want us to come together creatively to think about how can we make this work for those of us who want the choice of sending our child back to school full-time and getting creative and address, you know, like, like the allergies is kind of a perfect example, like that, that could be a roadblock or that could be something that we could talk through and think through and try to find a solution for. Or the tents are expensive, but could we talk about a fundraiser or could we talk about a GoFundMe page? Um, I just, I guess my main point is that there is so much division here, but the bottom line is we all love our kids, we all care about our families, we all want, you know, what's best. And that may be different for different families, but is there a way that we can all have the choice? Including those of us who would like to see our kids in school full-time? Can we creatively think outside the box, come together, um, you know, myself, Keith, we've been going into medical settings for 10 months with the proper PPE and we haven't gotten sick. Um, is there a way we can look at more PPEs with teachers? Again, I'm just, I didn't prepare anything, this is off the top of my head, but are there ways that we can make this work for those of us who see our kids really suffering as a result of, of being home so much?
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Um, LJ, did you say there was another person?
Yeah, there's one more caller.
Okay, and we're, and we're going to make this the last one for public comment. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, uh, hopefully you can hear me. This is, uh, Ken Lambert. I have two children at Marston School. Uh, I am not a medical professional, but, uh, have a few opinions here. Thanks for, uh, giving me a minute. First, I just wanted, uh, second Dr. Dominic's statement. I thought that was really excellent. You kind of hit on most things here. Um, I think everyone knows, you know, we have a few therapeutics and medications now that we did not know about or did not really have back in April. So I think that that's important to keep in mind. Obviously, no one wants to get sick with COVID. Um, but if people do get COVID, I think that they are in a better place now than they were, uh, eight or nine months ago. Uh, two, of course, the vaccines are coming and they're, they're already here. And, uh, obviously that's always get rolled out every day, every week, that, that helps, uh, helps the community. Um, I was also thinking, you know, possibly of allowing teachers or staff that are maybe 60-plus years old, some alternative, maybe work from home. Um, something else, obviously, we know that the, the age bracket of 60-plus is much more susceptible to be, uh, getting sick, uh, truly sick from, from COVID. That was just a thought. Um, I, I think that the unions need to work more for their communities and their state and, um, just realize that they don't work in a vacuum. Um, I think that's kind of key. And, uh, statewide, I don't have all the stats here, but from anecdotally, it seems like oh, most of the Catholic schools, the parochial schools that are doing five days full-time, that they seem to be doing okay. Uh, maybe they're not, I'm mistaken, but that's what I gathered from talking to a few people. So, you know, why is that or how is that? Um, and I guess I'd just like to know what the plan is. So, you know, we can all say that, yes, it's complicated and complex and, but that's fine. But, you know, how long are we going to say it's complicated and it's complex? Like, we have to come up with a solution. The, the school board and the town administration needs to come up with a solution and do their jobs. Um, you know, that's, that's my main point. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just would respond to that. I, I think the school administration and I think the school board and I think the teachers and administrators and Dr. Costa, we have been doing our jobs. It's that simple. Okay.
Yeah.
Can we accept these checks first so that we-
Yes, let's do that.
Okay. We have some checks in our packets. One of them, one of them.
Can I just say one thing before we, before, um, first off, I, I want to thank the people that did get on and speak tonight. Um, I hope you're going to listen to the rest of our presentation because-
Okay.
I hope you're going to listen to the rest of the evening tonight because we are going to talk about, um, a possible solution moving forward. So, um, um, friends that, friends and colleagues that were on tonight speaking, please make sure you do stick around. We, we hear you. We do hear you. Um, so please stick around.
Okay.
Can, can I just say one thing?
So, no, very quickly, we're going to get this done. Very quickly.
Can we send the principals home?
You're out of order.
No, no.
Right now.
They need to be here for the presentations that we've delayed. Yes.
Ri- right now.
I'm sorry.
And I guess I'll do it sing, um, one at a time. We have a Box Tops for Education check in the amount of 8,770 for Center School, moved Pepper, seconded Andrea. All those in favor? Ginny?
Aye.
Five, five zero. We have another one here. Uh, $10,000 from Shaw's North Hampton, uh, for Marston School, $10,000.
$10,000, yeah.
Change. Um, moved Frank, seconded Pepper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Ginny?
Aye.
Um, that is a, a program called Nourishing Neighbors. Wow, that's wonderful. And we have, um, a check for 4,7617. This is for Marston School from Life Touch. They take, uh, our pictures, moved Pepper. We're going to work you hard on your last meeting.
That's all right.
Seconded Frank. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, five zero. We have another one, uh, for Box Tops for Education from Marston School. You're hitting it big tonight Nathan.
Yeah.
$129.30, moved Andrea, seconded Pepper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing. Okay.
Okay.
So we got that done. Dr. Costa, back to you.
All right. So I wanted to start by sharing with you a video that was actually put out by the New Hampshire School Administrators Association. This was developed at a state level and three of our administrators are actually in it that talk about what does schooling look like amongst COVID-19. So I, I do think it is worthy of a look see because it is very well done. And it does feature Nathan Sadler, principal of Marston School, Keith LaSard, our facilities manager, and Dr. Lois DeSylvanapkin, our pupil service director. So a quick four-minute, but well worth your time. And then from there, we want to talk about our mid-year data review. I think that will be very enlightening. And then we want to talk about, um, one of the solutions we have moving forward that I think people will be anxious to hear.
Coming into the pandemic, we know that it's having a serious impact on everyone's mental health and wellness, whether it's students or staff and also parents in the community. We had to work really hard to create an environment at school that really makes everyone feel safe and secure by supporting the staff however we can, then trickles down to the kids. And focusing on social emotional learning and the students' mental health and wellness has been essential. Those two priorities combined together are part of the reason I think our kids are still thriving even in the midst of a global pandemic.
Our primary goal and drive was to make sure our buildings were safe so that we could have classroom instruction. And we were able to pivot and modify our cleaning to fight COVID-19 and make the buildings safe.
The first challenge was do we have enough Chromebooks? Do we have enough computers? So you needed different screens so that the kids could see each other and that the teacher could see all the kids. We got better microphones for teachers. We also bought headphones and microphone sets for every student. There is no going backwards when that pandemic is done. You will see a lot of benefit resulting from those tech upgrades, but also from teachers learning new methods and feeling comfortable with technology.
We all kind of took the idea of, okay, what's good teaching, what's good learning? And then how can we apply that to distance learning? I am seeing them every day, the family is waving hi because we're kind of building this together. It's a brand-new way to teach. And it's like being part of 24 families. We've been able to develop a community where otherwise it's, can be fairly lonely during the pandemic.
I think going remote for the math has been very difficult. Hopefully, parents feel the math is difficult anyways. Then you add that remote piece on top. The teachers are really taking care of the, the families because they truly loved every bar, part of, you know, of a child's education and they wouldn't be able to do it without the parents. And, and I think the parents are seeing the same.
It really made us think about what is the most important skills kids need to know. In previous years, we'd have one or two kids in a welding group working together. That wasn't going to fly. We got kids welding outside. More kids are participating actively. It was common that I'd walk by the welding lab and half the kids would be in the classroom and not actually out welding. I've yet to walk by and see a kid sitting in the classroom. They're all out in that welding shop. I would hope that maybe it's an appreciation of the amount of work, you know, the instructors did to ensure that they could have that experience.
We always figure out a way, you know, i- is there a way? There's always a way. Especially for our students with special needs. We have to figure this out because we've got to accommodate everything to fit their needs.
For my staff to wear masks all day are challenging. So we have to stay upbeat, motivated and remember that this is about the kids, this isn't about us. We're adults, we can deal with it. We really, really encourage the students to eat in the dining room. It was a challenge. We've changed meal times because we don't want these kids to miss a beat.
Kelly Collins, who's the principal of the, uh, New London Elementary School. So she came up with this idea to do Friday Lives with Ms. Collins.
Hi, everyone. It is Ms. Collins.
It's really fun that people are engaging with it and I think it's giving people an opportunity to really see what their students' day-to-day life is.
Good afternoon, third grade. Everybody follows all the guidelines, six feet apart, you wear your mask in public.
There's so many unique things that are happening to make this school year work. And by having some of these Facebook Lives or even just videos, we're able to show that.
We were fortunate that we had some experience with outdoor education already at Southwood School, but we realized that this would be an opportunity to expand upon that. And it's given us more options to learn from our natural environment.
In the spring, we had had the reverse grades for students. In thinking about Veterans Day, it just kind of clicked together. Having that sense, that bigger sense of what we're all a part of is just so important in building good citizens in our students.
So just a little insight in that, you know, Hampton is not alone in our challenges. And, um, I do believe that collectively we can work together and we were, we will continue to work together. What, what we want to do now is we want to provide for you a little mid-year review of the data. Um, we've asked that the principals take some time in their teams to start looking at where are our students? We, we understand that obviously this has been a very challenging year. And again, keeping student learning central to every- student learning central to everything we do, we thought it was important to really take a in-depth look at our mid-year data. So, if we could, um, can we get that up and running? And we're going to get started and we're going to, it's, it's just, it's not going to take long, but it's very important because I think we're all curious as to how are the Hampton students doing, right? We know we're worried about our students socially emotionally. If you recall, we did have our counselors come in just a couple of months ago because we recognize that this is a priority for our schools and district. So, I'll give Greg a minute to get that up. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yes, please. Can you make it full screen, please? Yep. Thank you. So, historically, at this time of the year, we look at a mid-year review of our students to determine where they are. And we know that since March thirteenth of last year, learning has changed for our, our students, learning has changed for all students. Um, it's not unique to Hampton. It's not unique to New Hampshire. It is the, it's one of the sadly consequences of living with a pandemic at this time. We know that there is, or there has been and there is, a loss of in-person learning. We know that we're seeing our students, um, just two days a week. That is, that is not something we take lightly. We have though developed a hybrid schedule that allows for blended learning to happen, happen where, when students are not in school, they are getting instruction and support from remote teachers. We've made that a priority. We also know that when we look at data for our students, we never want to look at any one point of data in isolation. That is really important to think about three points of data, to think about how does that student look overall? Anyone can have a really good day or a really bad day, but it's really about what does that data point say in that one point in time? At each of our schools, you will hear from the principals talk tonight about their, uh, data teams. They're sometimes called our response to instruction or response to intervention teams that really specifically look at how are our students responding to instruction and interventions? And of course, as a district, we've always focused on high-quality instruction and learning. So, I want to begin at Center School and Tim is going to give you a little more information and then provide for you an overview of the iReady data in his pre-K grade-two school. Thanks, Tim.
Absolutely. Uh, just, just briefly, um, we have a couple of guided questions up here. I'm just going to quickly go through the guided questions about how we look at data and how data is used at Center School. And then I'm going to go over some, I'll, I'll pull it down just to talk, I guess it's a little muffled, but then I'm going to go over some, um, of our data that we collected from fall to mid-year. How do we use data? Well, we use data to inform instruction. It, it's the basis of how we teach. We, we take data, it, we make, we look at the data and we simply assess the data and adjust our teaching and learning to the data. We determine achievement for individual students and when to intervene or even to enrich students. We track growth, student progress, and we evaluate our instructional practices. Uh, some data points we collect at Center School, like Lois said, we look at the iReady, uh, both in reading and math. Uh, we're obligated under New Hampshire RSA to do a dyslexia screen. Uh, we're doing that this year through Acadians, which is used to be formerly known as Dibbles. And that's like a, a series of small screeners that we use for early literacy and early reading. Uh, all kindergarten students are tested in that area and grades one and two students below the fortieth percentile on the screen also get carried over. So, we don't let anyone slip through the crack on that. And we have some curriculum-based measures as well that we use, like our, our District Phonics Program Foundations. Uh, we test the phonological awareness, use Phantasm Bell. So, we have a lot of data points that we collect. The same for math. We use iReady math. Uh, we have curriculum-based measures in math as well. So, we have a million, we have three or four, but we have a lot of data points that we use as collection points to make sure that we get a good wide range of, of understanding of our child. How does data drive instruction? It, it simply determines a course of action that we need to take and what intervention programming we need to look at, uh, what foundational skills they need specifically for each student. Uh, each student is, is delivered on a path of progress for them. So, we use the data to do that. It drives our instruction both as a larger group and small group as well as individually. How do we progress monitor? Well, we do running records and reading. Uh, we, we check, uh, uh, different points throughout the year to make sure that, uh, progress is being made. We, uh, use, um, intervention programming, uh, through our Target Assist Program and through our Reading Specialist. Uh, we, um, use, um, a prescription that if, like, for example, if eighty percent of the class doesn't get eighty percent of the skills, we have to stop. We have to stop instruction. We have to go back, reteach and make sure that we move forward. Okay? Uh, again, we progress monitor, looking at the graph going down the line. Uh, we use, uh, iReady as progress monitoring throughout the year as well as, uh, uh, three points during the year, uh, like the Acadians that I talked about, a phonological awareness assessment we use, Foundations end of the unit test. So, we use all of those to progress monitor during the school year. And what are we looking for? You know, these are all kind of easily related. We look for our strengths. We look for weaknesses and we look to develop, uh, ways to meet the needs of each individual student. So, we have a, we have a system in place that students do not fall through the cracks. That's our goal, to make sure students do not fall through the cracks. Uh, and when are we concerned? Uh, the last point that's up there right now, when are we concerned? We're concerned if, if students in, in tier one, which is regular education classroom settings are not making progress, we're concerned. And we do that through those Lois said data teams. We meet on a regular basis. We bring up students that aren't making progress in a regular education classroom, least restricted programming. So, we go next to a tier-two intervention program, which might be a small, uh, thirty-minute, twenty-minute, uh, two times a week, three times a week, four times a week grouping to make sure that they can get specific help in the specific area to help bump them and get them up to where they need to be. So, when we're concerned, the data shows us when we're concerned. Uh, we, and one of the most important data points that I failed to mention is the old-fashioned just observation. If it doesn't look right, it's not right. So, uh, that's, that's still the, the true way to do an observation, uh, to collect data, uh, to collect data is through observation. So, that, that's where we are on data and in a nutshell of how data is used at Center School. And now, the next slide, Greg, is a little bit about what we use as, um, our testing at our school because, um, we like the, the whole program of iReady, um, and the, all it has to offer, but it is only one test. And I want to go over a little bit about the scores. What you see here is three categories on grade level. That's in all content area. That's all skills at the test. Just below, um, those are students that are needing some support. And then significantly below, those are usually those highest need special education students. We were prepared for this. So, we test, uh, in the fall, mid-year, end of the year. We don't do any testing in the fall for kindergarten students. That just is not appropriate. They're not ready to take a computerized test in the fall. They have to use a computer first and understand how that works. So, in the kindergarten, we use mid-year and end of the year. These kids are coming in from last year where they might not have had a full preschool program. Those are the early zero through five years. Those are the most critical years. So, they came in in mid-year and we were proud to see that seventy-four percent of them are where they need to be. So, that's great at mid-year. So, the, the program that we have working at Center School in our kindergarten is taking the kids who came this year at a very different level. We had a lot more kids come in previously that had beginning skills. It wasn't the case this year. We, we had a little decline of kids that came in with some beginning reading skills, um, quite naturally because of what happened last spring and last March through the end of the year. Um, so, you know, on love, on grade level in kindergarten, seventy-four percent, uh, at, at, um, that twenty-six percent are needing some support and we're getting supports through our kindergarten aides. We're, we're under, uh, Molly and Lynn's direction. We've given great, um, advice and training at our kindergarten aides to give now supports in the classroom to these students. And, uh, right now, there are no kids that are really, that's so significantly below. So, that's, those are great scores. Uh, in first grade, this was expected. Please don't panic. In first grade, coming in, this is in September, these scores, the most critical learning for kids in their path of learning, like K through eight, they're learning how to read. We stopped that in March last year. We had, so we came in and we noticed there was tremendous in reading areas that we needed to work on. Look where they have jumped in, in just half of a year, even in a hybrid program, which is quite successful, by the way. They've gone from twenty-four percent that, um, were in the fall in grade one that were on grade level, only twenty-four percent, to mid-year, we've doubled that, forty-eight percent, forty-seven percent. So, we're on a path of progress that is doubling the amount of students that are now working towards where they need to be. That is apt, that is kudos to, to everything that's going on in grade one. They're doing the best they possibly can. So, those numbers have dropped significantly as well in the, uh, significantly below grade levels. And then in grade two, now they've had a little bit of, they've had a whole year of kindergarten. They had a stunted grade one. Now, they're in a hybrid grade two. Remember, in a primary school, it's learn how to read, not master what you already have and build on skills. So, that's where the biggest impact has occurred. But the students in, for example, grade two, uh, have jumped from forty-seven percent on grade level up to sixty-four percent. So, I'm confident that under the hybrid model, that we can continue to make gains that we've set a path of progress for. We are on a great path right now and I'm confident by the end of the year, when we do the end of the year iReady testing, that we are going to be where we need to be. Remember, we're not asked to be on grade level by June of 2021. We're asked by the governor to be on grade level by June of 2022. We took that as our mission. You can't make significant gains in just a half a year where you've had a loss of instruction, right? So, you have to give it time. These teachers have adjusted their scope and sequence. They've adjusted their pacing. They're focusing on the most essential standards and they're doing what they need to do to meet the needs of the students. So, they're doing a great job. I think they're doing a great job. Down below, the next slide talks about areas of strength and, uh, areas of improvement. Um, I'm not going to read all of those. Those are just areas that we know that we're working on in our tier-two and our tier-three programming as well as significantly spending more time this year on those skills in our reading program. Uh, we are understanding that we're spending more time on phonological awareness and on phon, phonics than we normally do. So, we've adjusted the way we teach reading, uh, to make sure that we're backfilling all these gaps. And then math, um, is the next slide, Greg. Mid-year math scores, again, kindergarten not applicable, but it's almost seventy percent at mid-year. Um, grade one from twenty-two percent to fifty-one percent and grade two from thirty-one percent to forty-seven. So, it's almost the same, um, type of path of progress for reading as it is in math. So, again, we're making significant gains as we're moving forward. Uh, those people that need some interventions, they're getting interventions in the classroom as well as what we can do, uh, as support programs at school. And, um, again, I don't want to duplicate what I talked about at reading. It's the same exact, um, type of programming we have for math as we do in reading. And down below, based on the, uh, Common Course State Standards, these are areas of strength and weakness in kindergarten, grade one and two. So, I open it up for any questions. Do you have any questions for me, uh, my staff at Center School of what we're doing and what we need to be doing, uh, what's working, what's not working?
I, I missed the start of it. What are these, what, what are these, what test did they take?
They're taking an iReady test. It's a computerized test, um, it's based on norms. And the norms in the fall are based on a typical year, not taking into account, because it's normed two years in advance, it's not taking into account a stoppage of instruction. So, remember that. We're going up against pitcher, uh, minor league baseball players going into a major league baseball park for the first time. Where the norms weren't really matched aligned because the nat, these tests that we take, these standardized computerized tests, the norming range is based on years and years and years of practice in a normal year of how they typically scored and build averages in. So, um, these scores are against the norm, not against the nation. So, it's against the norm. So, so they started off in need. We knew that. These, these, this test helped us determine as well as all the other things that we use, areas of strengths and weaknesses. And we simply, like building a house, went to work. We started building and filling in what we need to do to start working on those skills. I, I, again, I just have to say thank you to my staff and I definitely have to say thank you to the parents. They have become true partners in this. Uh, they've helped out tremendously and, uh, they're doing the best they possibly can for us. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Tim?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello, Mr. Sadler.
Without repeating a ton of what Mr. Lannan said, you know, we, we use our assessments for a lot of the same reasons, so to get a gauge as to where students are at and figure out what we need to do to get them where they're supposed to be by the end of their, their grade level. Um, we use a lot of both quantitative and qualitative data. So, as Mr. Lannan was talking about, um, this is one data point i- in a triangle that we use, um, in conjunction with other curriculum-based measures we have at the school as well as, um, our standardized state testing that the students generally participate in the fall. I mean, in the spring, sorry. Um, you know, STAR for us is a universal screener. It's an indicator of student achievement and helps us predict or project where students might end up on our state assessments. You know, we give the STAR at Marston School three times a year for all students, five times a year for any students that are in tier-two or tier-three, but the nice part about it is teachers can administer it at any time to anyone in their class. Um, we have an unlimited amount of licenses and we can assess students as often as possible. We have completed the STAR in both the in-school, so the hybrid model, and our full remote students also participated in this, uh, which presented its own unique set of challenges, um, for us. Looking at, um, our, okay, our STAR reading data that's up there, you can see that students are moving in the right direction. They are making growth. When I look at those fall numbers, and while they might not be totally in line with where we normally are, we do have to take into consideration what happened in March. Um, I would say though, looking at this, that not only did we, um, deliver some high-quality instruction, we were able to help kids maintain or retain those core foundational skills that they need. Um, students coming in at the seventieth percentile with almost a trimester lost last year or just doing remote instruction tells us that while we know ro- remote instruction had room for improvement in the spring, some of the things we were doing were working for our students. Um, you know, in our, at or above grade level, all grade levels are making progress in reading and heading in the right direction. What we're looking for is the yellow on watch. We're looking for those students to be moved over into the green. So, when we look at our mid-year data, we want to see those numbers decreasing. So, when we had twenty-six students in watch, twenty-six percent of our third graders on watch in the fall, ten percent of those students have now shifted over, um, in one direction or the other to, to demonstrate growth. Um, and that's what we're looking for. You know, we, we want to move those students in the middle over and ha- have them get either at or above grade level. Um, most of our red urgent intervention, um, are students that potentially could be identified or on individualized or specialized learning plans. Um, what we're really looking at is not only our tier-one instruction for the majority of our students that you see in green, but our tier-two interventions and instruction for students in yellow through Title One and Target Assist. And STAR is one of the data points we use, um, in terms of determining eligibility for Title One services, um, at our school and in the district. And when we're looking at areas of strength and improvement, again, it's one data point, but we're trying to pull out the, um, skills or standards that students are doing well on and then where do they need to build on. In both math and reading though, we have to realize we take this assessment at the beginning of the year, generally before we give instruction. We then take it again in January, but we haven't finished everything we're supposed to teach the kids by the end of fourth grade. So, when we're taking this assessment in January, based on our scope and sequence and curriculum maps, there are skills and standards, especially in math, that we haven't even addressed yet. They haven't been taught and students are still performing well on them. The areas for improvement, um, those are the ongoing higher-order thinking skills, you know, in- inferring, drawing conclusions, um, that students are constantly developing. As Tim said, they learn to The areas for improvement, those are the ongoing higher order thinking skills, you know, inferring, drawing conclusions that students are constantly developing. As Tim said, they learn to read at center school. When you start to get up in grades three through five, they're reading to learn. And then how do they dive into a text and how do they use the unique features of it to, you know, come to an understanding or develop answers? In math, again, students started out pretty well and are moving in the, in the right direction. There is a little bit of a plateau there in fourth grade, but still, when you start at the eighty-one percent of your students at or above grade level, that tells us that our math instruction, not only last year, but remotely in the spring, was solid enough to help those kids hold on to those skills. Again, we're looking for our mid-year data to go up, and our mid-year in our on-watch students to decrease and hopefully move to an act or on grade level. Again, you know, we're looking at the yellow mostly, the students that are on watch. We do this with our achievement team and our RTI Core Team who regularly review student data, and just make sure, as, as Mr. Lannan stated too, that no one's slipping through the cracks that if a student requires an intervention or support, that they're getting what they need to be successful. The nice thing about these assessments is you can look at the school, you can look at the grade level as we're doing now, you can dive in and start looking at individual classes, and then pull reports for individual students. When you pull an individual student report, it tells you exactly where their areas of strength and areas of improvement are, so teachers can start grouping kids, planning instruction, and differentiating to make sure they're meeting their needs. And when we look at math, the skills and areas of improvement, again, fractions is just starting to be taught now in, in the end of January, beginning of February, and the students were assessed on it both in September, October, and then in January. So some of the things we need to improve are not overly surprising to us, because they're skills or standards that we haven't met yet in our pacing, scope, and sequence. It just tells us, though, that when we are planning instruction, those might be areas that we really need to focus on with our students. And when we look at this with a curriculum-based measure or our state standardized testing, it gives us a pretty clear picture of what our teachers need to do to help our kids be successful. So that's just a glance at one data point we use at Marston, and again, we usually use between three and four data points. It's just best practice, it's also what the state requires when we're, when we're working on Title One eligibility to ensure that our, that our students who are at risk or, or in need of support are getting those interventions.
Questions?
If I take this down. Good evening, everybody. Again, it's really tough to follow Mr. Lannan and, and Mr. Sadler, because they do cover all the points. The important thing is that we have, it's a triangle, so we have instruction, we have assessment, and, and then we have to go back and we, we start again, and we, we look at where the strengths and weaknesses are. Our RTI program is a tiered program, so when you see the results, they're very similar to what Mr., what Mr. Sadler's showing you, we use the same, we use the same assessment tool. The, the STAR program has been with us for about ten years. So we're, we've, we've got data from third grade up to eighth grade, and it really is about showing growth. We don't assess just to assess, because that's just, that's just wasting time. Teachers use it to inform instruction. I have Mr. Dougherty here, who's going to talk about athletics, but he is actually, he's our seventh and eighth grade language arts teacher, so maybe the specific questions can go to him, but he knows, he knows his kids as far as strengths and weaknesses. When, when we look for data, we're always looking for growth. And STAR allows us to do that. We can actually set goals for children, we can actually give them a script. And can you hear me, Jenny? But it's using that every single day. We have a data team, we'll bring, it's much like an SAT team, we'll, we'll bring kids forward and go, well, he tested really well, or she tested really well here, what happened? And again, with the, with the hybrid model, we are covering those essential skills, and when you see the results from this, similar to what Mr. Sadler said, we haven't covered those, those topics yet, because basically, we just finished testing today. So this, these results are really hot off the press. And yes, we did the same thing, we were able to test our in-school students and our remote students as well. That's another advantage of that program. So the first one you're going to see is the, is the reading. And, and quite honestly, from my perspective, they were actually pretty good. Our fall results, we expected there'd be a drop. If you look at the first area, that's the green area, those are students who are above grade level or at grade level, and when they tested, they, they, they fared fairly well. What we then do is, the important thing is you look from, you look from fall to the mid-year and see where we went down or where we went up. That middle group there, the on-watch group, is what we call our tier two intervention, and those are the kids who benefit from our shock block, our direct reading instruction, direct math classes. We're having those now, but they're very small numbers. And so obviously, you know, we, we don't want that, that middle section to get any bigger than it is right now. And the last area is our, are, those are kids who are below grade level significantly. They may be identified, they may not be, but again, you can see that in a, in a, I guess, an ideal model, you'd have eighty percent of your students in the green area, you'd have about fifteen percent, I'm sorry, about ten percent in the middle area and about five in the urgent area. So yeah, are there some, are there some weaknesses, are there some losses? I believe so, but I also believe that we've still got four months of school, four and a half months, and our teachers are going to get, just like Tim said, we're going to get to the goal at the end of the year. Let's take a look at, again, taking a look at reading. And, and so one of the generalizations I'll make for you, you can see the specific standards here, but our kids are fairly strong on reading fictional stories, poetry, analyzing things like that. They are, the struggle with this, this, this assessment was the informational texts. So that's the, the nonfiction, that's reading for information, and we work on that every single day in the classroom. Again, there are, there were items on there that, again, in language arts, they come back and they hit again and again and again. And obviously, our eighth graders are preparing for their oratorical, so actually, informational text is going to be very important to them in their research, so we're working on that every day. Math results, again, very similar to what Mr. Sadler relayed to you, in that we started the year pretty well, I, I was, I was pretty pleased with that. If you take a look at seventh grade, seventh grade is one of those years where, you know, math gets harder. We get, we're, we're talking about, you know, we're talking about more algebraic concepts and working on, on those things. And so, you know, that's kind of a shock to system, to the system for some kids. What we really looked at, at there in that middle area there was, they're working with, in sixth and seventh grade, they're working with ratios and decimals and fractions. And, and in seventh and eighth grade, we kind of, we hop that up, because they're then multiplying, dividing, using rational numbers and irrational numbers. So the difficulty in math is, I think, in this test, we just hadn't gotten to those concepts yet. Again, we, we really keep our eye on that third category, the red, red category. Again, it's a small movement, but again, and that may only be one or two kids, but that's one or two kids, so those, those are important kids to us. If you take a look at our, our math, next slide, please. Mathematically, again, algebra, algebra is everything that runs through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so we have strengths and, again, within algebra, there are, there are probably fifteen or twenty different competencies. So we're really needle, we're getting down to a fine point where this might be, this is, this is equations with one variable, graphing, things like that. And again, this time of year, you know, we're getting to the, we, we're getting to the, the meat of those topics. We'll take this, we'll take this data. Again, my staff hasn't even seen it, because we just finished that testing today and kind of put this together. We'll share it with our staffs, and then, and then obviously, we're looking forward to, to sharing maybe end of the year data with you. Thank you. I just wanted to, I, I've been running around out there, Winnicott, our eighth graders are having their introduction to Winnicott High School, it's an information night, and the link was not working that Winnicott sent, so we sent out a link real quick, and we hope those parents are on there right now.
So, that's our data presentation, and...
Yeah, you may want to pull that mic down.
That's our data presentation. And while the data is moving in the right direction, the data does confirm what we suspected. The pandemic has caused some learning loss, and we're not alone. Nationally, the data shows us that children in first and second grade experience the most dramatic drop, that forty percent of first graders and thirty-five percent of second graders are significantly at risk. So we are doing better than the national data. But the question is, now what? So what do we do with this? So in conclusion, these are the things that we're going to be doing moving forward to, to bring our data to a different level. Like the principal said, we're going to be bringing all of our kids in the same direction by the end of the school year, using the, the teaming that we continue to use, there's lots of teaming going on in Hampton, lots of team meetings, supports and interventions, continue the communication that's going on. And, you know, remember that our parents are our partners, they have been working so hard at home with their children, and we want to continue that. We've even started bringing in demonstrated success to help bring the parents on board with some learning topics to help them help their students at home. So we're going to continue moving forward. Thank you. So, so obviously, although the data was probably about what we expected, we, we too talked as a leadership team, and we talked about, is there something we could do? We, we recognize that we know that in-person learning is critically important. When we began the journey back in the fall, Wednesdays, we had designated as a deep cleaning day, really not knowing just how long it was going to take to deep clean. We also felt it was important to provide time for social-emotional learning with our students, and it was also a time for the cohorts to get together with their homeroom teacher, and I'm hearing for some children, that is really just a highlight of their week. But as we think about these learning gaps, and we think about moving forward, and we talked extensively, and you know that Mr. Lassard is also on our leadership team, we talked about, was there an opportunity for more in-person learning on Wednesdays? And Mr. Lassard assured me that he would work to make it happen if that's what we wanted to do. We, we hear the parents, we heard them early this evening, and we pay attention, we know that in-person learning is critical to students' achievement and their well-being. And so we, as a leadership team, feel comfortable that we may be able to capture more in-person learning on Wednesdays, and it would allow us at least a half a day for our students to have more in-person learning every other week. So how we would do it, because again, we still have our deep cleaning, we still have some things we have to get done, but what we could do is we could provide a schedule where those Wednesday half-days would be, would be cohort A one week, cohort B the next week, and this would provide, again, more in-person learning for these students. It's not to say it would be in place of social-emotional learning, because that takes place all the time. Building relationships with children, connecting with children, is what we are all about. We are committed to educating the whole child. That means academically, behaviorally, and socially emotionally. We know that's important. So that's something that we would be willing to explore, and I know that we talked about, you know, how, how quickly could we do this, right? I think that would be on everybody's mind. And, you know, my understanding is, is that we would have to work with our schedules, but if we really pressed, we could be ready for when we return from the break in February. So there's that possibility for us to explore. There's also, we know that summer program, summer program is going to be important this summer, intensive and an extensive summer program, that we would love to be able to offer our children as well, and it would be in-person, and we do have some CARES money that is coming our way that we could use to help defray that. We also can explore tents. We can. It's something we explored last year, but we can explore it again, knowing what we do have for CARES money. If you recall, when we were preparing for opening our schools, we were unclear just how much relief money we would get. And when we were preparing for the 2020, 2021 budget, we didn't see COVID in sight. In fact, we were very concerned financially about PPE, about Plexiglas, about all of the things that we needed to put in place, our air quality, air scrubbers, right? This was, this was also a concern. We now have a better sense of what the CARES money looks like, so we can do, we can do three things. We can certainly explore tents to see the availability and the cost, we can look at Wednesdays to provide more in-person learning, and we will also be implementing an intensive, extensive summer programming. We, we hear, we hear what the parents are saying. We hear them. Go ahead.
Can we, you're suggesting a half-day on Wednesday. Can we look at a full day? We're only talking about two additional hours. I don't see where that's a problem, you know? And I think that's moving forward, helping these kids on the social and emotional issue.
There are some factors around that, Frank. We can talk with Mr. Lassard about that. We also, if you recall, there was planning time in the afternoon that was used to really coordinate what's happening in cohort A, cohort B, our remote students, there's that coordination that has to happen. That is, I, I think, if anybody wants to speak about it, I know that is critical to student success, given the fact that we are going to basically, again, we are supporting in-person, hybrid, and also remote learning. Do you want to speak to it?
Just to reiterate what goes on on Wednesdays, is that at all the schools, we're running three separate schools, we get the hybrid, the in-school, and the full remote. And coordination is critical, not only coordination, but for example, the hybrid, for us, hybrid program to be successful, the teachers, the homeroom teachers have to create videos when they're not meeting with a hybrid teacher live. So those reading and writing and math videos and, and work packets and all that information has to be done during school hours on the contract time, they can't do that after school hours. So as we're running a hybrid program, you need to build in time to allow for that coordination of planning and the building of the, of the videos to prep for the week, so that when, I'm a homeroom teacher, I'm teaching two days, when I release them for three days, there's a hybrid teacher that's not responsible for everybody's kids, seventy-five, eighty per grade, one teacher's not teaching those all day, there's teaching in groups, and then when the kids aren't with, live with the teacher, they have to access the Google Classroom and do their videos, and do their independent work, and do their stuff, so I would love to have kids in every day and all that, but for a successful hybrid program to work, you do need that time. And if we're going to be cutting it down to half, half the day and only doing that, that's still, we're still willing to do that, but we do need that Wednesday to do that. I just want to be clear on that. Any questions on that?
How much time do you need?
We'll need the half, we'll need a half a day on Wednesday to do that. Thank you.
So what's happening now?
It's, they're using that half day to, to do that, as well as the morning to do that, but they're also involved in professional learning meetings, our data teams are talking about, we're doing all of that, so we're going to consolidate that to incorporate this Wednesday. But remember, the Wednesday mornings also have been instructional time, we're just shifting what that instructional time is to be not remote, it's going to be in-person. So during the Wednesdays, traditionally, we've had blocks of instruction that focused on social-emotional learning, we're front-loaded that. So we've got, we've done a great job on that, we're going to incorporate that now into our everyday learning, into our morning meetings and what we need to do, and then we're going to hear about where these are gap, we just presented, these academic gaps, we're going to be trying to fill that in with more in-person learning on Wednesday. We're going to be trying to fill that in with more in-person learning on Wednesdays.
Well, I have to say that I have to commend the teachers and staff.
They, they need to be commended for the work they're doing, running the hybrid and the.
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure that they understand that we really appreciate what they're doing.
So I'm going to make a motion that we move forward with what Dr. Costa presented to us about the Wednesdays, uh, starting as soon as possible, but most likely after, uh, February vacation.
That's, that'll be the goal. I know that the middle school's a little bit trickier, but we're gonna, that's the goal. Yep.
Is there a second?
David, Mr. O'Connor, do you want to say something?
We, uh, we met today. Um, we're, we're fairly confident. I mean, obviously, a middle school schedule is very different from an elementary schedule. But again, um, we have all the pieces. Uh, we, we moved to, we moved to it today, actually. We moved to an early release schedule today at nine o'clock. Um, we just, we just, it's those people who are remote. Um, we're going over to make sure the integrated arts people, it's, it's all equitable, and everybody has the same expectation and time. But we should be able to have that done by March first.
Further discussion on the motion, Ginny?
Um, the only thing I have to, to say, I will support the motion. But, um, I think it was Mrs. Dominic that brought up the point. I think we all need to realize that teachers, parents, children, school boards, and everyone are partners. And we have to work together, and I think, uh, Dr. Costa's trying to do that. I think that when we pass this, we know that this is a dandoll answer, and that we'll keep working on the solution, but we all need to work together.
Thank you, Ginny. Absolutely. Andrea?
No, I'm all set.
Uh, I just have a question. Have, uh, I'm for the idea, okay? It just moves it closer to getting these kids in. But have we looked at what the impact is going to be on parents? Because now they have to change their own dynamics of childcare? Because now you're going to half a day on Wednesday, not the other week. So how's that going to impact them? Have we gotten input from them?
It's a great question, but right now, they are going half-days only right now. So the schedule is still the same. It would just be in-person. I don't see a change in schedule. It just would be in-person versus remote.
Well, if.
Ginny? Ginny?
If you have childcare, and you are planning on your children going somewhere for childcare or paying someone for childcare, going, having them go into school, the parents are going to have to find somebody that's willing to do that every other week. And I, I don't know how that would work. But that's, you know, that's a thing that we can look at and see what's, what's happening. And parents, please let us know what, what this is doing and how you are, are doing this. It could be difficult for some families, that's all, that's all I'm going to say. But I think it's worth trying.
Ginny, can I say something? Ginny, I, I agree. Um, we talked about this. We wondered if we should wait. Is this the right timing? Um, but we, what we thought was, our goal, if you remember, one of our school, one of our goals as a board is to increase or to return to brick-and-mortar learning. We thought this was a step towards increasing our brick-and-mortar learning. We hear loud and clear from families that they want more in-person learning. Um, I, I agree. It is, it's a schedule change. We talked about this, so, back in March, about we have to be flexible. I believe the commissioner and the governor's words were, the words was nimble. We heard the word nimble time and time again. Districts have to be flexible and nimble so that we can pivot. The word was pivot between these different modalities of learning. I think it's one thing to say we can do it, but you're absolutely right. When you're doing it, we know there are, there are obviously some barriers and problems. That's why if we are making this decision tonight, um, with the goal of moving towards after vacation, it gives families about two or three weeks.
Further discussion? Okay, we have a motion, um, going forward. All those in favor? Ginny?
Yes.
Andrea, yes, five here. If, um, if we get some great news, some positive news, and things change quite a bit, and we no longer need to be home two days, um, obviously, this will go away. But that remains to be seen. Do we need to make a motion about the summer program?
No, we can, we can, we're just going to move forward with that, and we will, um, Mr. Lassard and I can look at tents too, right?
Can we get that information by the March meeting regarding tents? I'm looking at, you've probably got about three to five weeks, so. Right? Thank you.
And just to reiterate, it, it goes without saying. Our administrators, our teachers, our parents, Lois, the board, we want to get all these kids brick-and-mortar, in-person instruction as fast as we can.
Without a question.
And I know you know that.
Can, can I ask another question directed at Les?
Yes.
Where did we stand on the letter to the governor to expedite the teachers in the vaccination program?
Okay, well, we weren't alone. The New Hampshire School Boards Association sent a letter. Uh, I believe the Principals Association sent a letter. Uh, I called the governor's secretary and talked with him at length. I thought that was better than a letter. Um, and he said he had been inundated with, uh, with requests. But I see he hasn't changed anything.
Can I speak, can I speak to it?
Sure.
Because it came up at our meeting with the commissioner. Commissioner Ettleblut did speak to it, to the superintendents. Um, and what he said was, the governor feels that New Hampshire has been successful with these in-person models. He feels so this model, like a hybrid or what schools are doing, has been successful. Therefore, he put us to the two-A group, putting the one-B group where it's at. That was, that was Commissioner Ettleblut's response, because the superintendents did press for, um, asking if we could be part of the one-B group. And Commissioner Ettleblut said, the governor is very happy with how the schools are responding to COVID-nineteen with their models. And he is pleased with the in-person learning that is happening, um, be, be it as it is. And therefore, he felt it was more important that the elderly, um, so right now, it's sixty-five and older, and also anyone that is immuno-compromised, be in this group right now. What I don't think he realized was, as we know, New Hampshire is a graying state. So what that means is there is such a large population of sixty-five and over that has now pushed the two-A group, which is educators and staff, what we thought was going to be March to May, has now pushed us back April, May, June. So that's where that is. So, I think there's a feeling of frustration around the state by the Principals Association, Administrators Association, and the School Boards Association. But there is no, um, movement for change. So, that's, as, as Frank Ettleblut has explained it to me.
Well, okay, my question now becomes, okay, I know that we're sixty-five plus, but where does that put ski instructors? They're in the one-B.
They are the first, they are first responders, is what was, what was stated. They are considered first responders. That was the answer.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. All right, that's the next thing on our list.
Okay. Next thing on our list is snow days. Um, we all know how we're handling them right now. They just become remote instruction. There has been some pushback from parents who feel that we should go back to the quote "old-fashioned" snow days and let the kids enjoy the snow and so on and so forth. So, uh, it's up for discussion tonight.
Can I speak to it?
Sure.
I had, I addressed it in my letter, um, this past week. Um, and I actually had a conversation with the Southeasters. I spoke with Dr. Arkalian about it at SAU twenty-one. Um, we do speak with our Southeasters superintendent, so that would be really important for us to speak with Dr. Dave Ryan over at Exeter. Um, because, remember, we are linked to Winnicottet. So what Dr. Arkalian does at Winnicottet, because those are our families, that's important. But also, um, the, the School of Technology, which is in Exeter, where Dave Ryan is the superintendent. It's important we're online with him, because we have also Hampton students that attend that school as well. So it's really important that Exeter, Winnicottet, Exeter, SAU twenty-one, Winnicottet, and SAU ninety are in alignment. Because we know that the older students sometimes are watching those younger students, right? When there is, um, impending weather, I can tell you that the superintendents start texting one another, and we have conversations. We did have a conversation about, um, a good old-fashioned snow day and how important that might be. We also then talked about what some children view as a good old-fashioned snow day. Other children do not. There are some children that don't have a good old-fashioned snow day. In fact, we know who those children are. Those are the children that sadly need the connection to their classmates, need the connection to their teacher, and really need the learning time, the continuity of instruction. So the conver, so, hearing, um, how parents were feeling, one of the things that the leadership team talked about was, how can you find a compromise? Is there a meeting ground in the middle? And that's where we came out with a remote, as you recall, a delayed opening remote day. And in my letter, I specifically stated, it gave our children time to play in the snow. It gave our children and families time to dig out, shovel out. And it also gave them the learning time to have continuous instruction. We also know that come June, and when the weather gets hot and the beach gets crowded and there's gridlock for buses A and D, it's very problematic for us, and it's uncomfortable in classrooms. So, what you, what you need to know is, when you take those snow days, it puts a day in June. And we know that those are not always, you know, positively received, because we've got camps, we've got vacations, and we've got hot weather. And we've got gridlock on the beach. So we're balancing all of that. My compromise was, as I said, a delayed opening remote. But I'm always open to hear if there's a better solution.
Do, do we need to make a motion? I don't think so. So we'll just continue as is.
That's, but that's my message.
Okay. Um, all right, I see something on here about a calendar change.
So, we've, we asked, um, it was asked, we discussed this at the leadership meeting, that second trimester is somewhat shorter because of some of the days we lost in December. So we are asking that we extend the second trimester by a week. So instead of it ending on March twelfth, it would end on March nineteenth. Report cards would go out on the twenty-ninth. And parent conferences would be on the thirty-first.
So moved. Second, Frank? Discussion, Ginny?
No.
Andrea?
All set.
Uh, all those in favor? Ginny?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a few things going on, um.
Um, excuse me, just one more.
Yep.
Jimmy, do you need to talk to us? I'm sorry.
It's okay. He should go first.
Yeah, can we do?
Well, I was going to inquire about athletics. Um, we're at the time of the year, we're, we'll be moving forward with meeting and adopting the schedule. Uh, so I was looking for guidance from the board as to, did we want to proceed with the schedule? Uh, did we want to, uh, look at our options tonight and look at the direction we could go in? Did we want to, um, you know, just take a pass on spring sports as well?
What spring sports are we talking about?
Okay, so we are talking about, uh, boys and girls track, which is a massive endeavor. Uh, over a hundred kids. Uh, it looks like the trend on the seacoast and the discussion among athletic directors would be to cancel. I did talk to coaches, and coaches don't know how we could possibly run a track program, um, considering our size, our schedule, and the meets exceed three to four hundred kids. It's, it's a massive endeavor. Baseball and softball as well. Uh, they're, they're smaller sports, they're outdoor sports. Um, but we would need locker room access. You have to store equipment, we have to get kids dressed, you know, and get kids onto the field. The other thing to consider before you do that is, if we do put tents up, tents would impede the ability to, to play any sports out back as well.
Have you and the seacoast athletic directors made schedules just in case, or not?
Well, we meet, we're meeting Friday to, to make a schedule. But obviously, I need some direction. We work off of a draft, and we do have a draft. So if the board wanted to go forward with, say, a partial baseball and softball schedule, on Friday, I could meet and I could arrange a, a partial baseball and softball schedule. Uh, anything that we make would be tentative, because as you know, sports drop all the time.
How would you, how, how would you, uh, and Dave, jump in here if you want. How, how would you do, let's just say, baseball? When you only have half the kids, how would, just have the other kids meet you after school or something?
Yeah, yeah. It would, since we're working on a hybrid schedule, um, the kids who are at home would have to come in.
Get transportation.
And get transportation. Uh, I mean, that's a good thing, because, um, in terms of getting dressed, that would be half the kids that were in our locker room. So baseball and softball teams are rather small. So it would only be half of the team, probably, who we would need locker room space for.
Um, do you have a drop-dead? I know, I know you're meeting Friday, but do you have a drop-dead time when? In other words, can this wait till the next board meeting, or should we really decide tonight?
The reason we have the athletic directors meeting this week is the area athletic directors have gotten, some have gotten direction from their administration to meet and start looking at putting together a sports schedule. So, um, I could certainly put together a schedule and then propose it at the next meeting. Um, but I, again, I probably wouldn't have track on that. It would probably be limited. Um, but again, if you wanted to proceed with any kind of athletics, we could also look at intramurals. We could look at other things to get kids out. Uh, for example, soccer didn't happen this fall. And if we could get some field space, we could run an intramural soccer program, for example. Great for social and emotional, uh, the social-emotional piece that's, that's kind of lacking.
I, I think we should pursue this only because it's spring, it's outdoor, and we've got to get these kids into a social and emotional environment. I think it's a way to let out steam for them and be part of it. So I, I, I support going back to the sports you just talked about. Track and field is too congested, too crazy. But, you know, bringing back spring soccer, uh, baseball, softball, I, I think it's an excellent idea.
I have a question. Um, NHIA, are they giving it any, um, advice? And it, and also, if, and if they are, if we don't have the teams to play, could we go to an intramurals? What are your thoughts?
Um, I, I mean, high schools have proceeded, and there are guidelines from NHIA. Um, I, I believe they're meeting this week. Um, but, you know, their guidelines are directed towards high school, and high school athletics have, have gone forward um, rather successfully. So, you know, we do, we do have a model, um, to go by. Um, I have really comprehensive guidelines from, from every, for every sport that was put out by the National Federation of High Schools last spring, uh, that really breaks down how we would be safe in, in, um, enacting any sport. Uh, so I'd feel pretty comfortable doing it. Again, it's just what we feel comfortable doing as a, as a community.
Do we have teams to play? Are, are they going to be?
See, that, that's a really good question. Even if I make the schedule on Friday, there's a really good chance, as you proceed, that they could drop. However, just getting kids together and practicing and feeling like a team, and if you can get a couple of sports is progress. Um, and that's moving in, 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 in a good direction.
Are you in favor of that?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. I, I, I mean, what I do, uh, quite honestly, uh, Mr. DeLuca, is, is I talk to everybody. I talk to the coaches. Um, I think that sports are a great social-emotional piece for kids. I, I think that, uh, it's one of the big things that bonds a middle school community together is, is their team. And, um, gives kids something. and gives kids something to look forward to every day, so.
So.
Karen Brand, does Mrs. Brand have want to weigh in on it too? Just because we're still here, since you're here.
I support what Jim is proposing. There are guidelines that Safer at Home has that I could certainly work with Jim to make sure there's stringent criteria that we have to follow. But I'm in support of bringing back the sports, starting slow and not bringing track in.
I've been to 100 junior high track meets. And I know that the number of kids that are there from, you know, 10 schools with the competitors and the parents and so on and so forth. I hate to single out on sport and say, "No, but I don't think we could go ahead with track and field."
Yeah, I appreciate that too, that input, Les. I think the coaches are in strong agreement as well.
Hold on. Andrea?
I'm sorry, I would have to disagree with you. As a former middle school track and field coach at Hampton Academy for at least 15 years, it is the one sport where we can get many, many kids involved outdoors, socially distanced, and they can participate. There's something for everyone. And I would have to say that I think that the spring track and field should go on.
Ginny?
I tend to agree with you, Les. I know that we can keep them socially distanced when they're participating in the track and field event, but what happens when the event ends and they go? Again, we are limiting our schools to our hybrid learners. We haven't combined both of the classes. If we say we're going to do it in sports, then I think we're going against our own policies as we've had them. If we come and we can use tents, then that opens up a whole new thing. And we can be outside and we can separate. We can figure out how that would be good. But I think right now we have to figure out a lot more answers. So we have a lot more questions than we have the answers.
Okay, so I think Jimmy and Dave were kind of recommending two sports, softball and baseball.
Two sports with the possibility of soccer as well as an intermural.
Fields baseball.
I just have a question regarding field and track. Can you do that as an intermural?
So anything that I'm coming up with is in close consultation with our coach. So I talked extensively with our head coach. And this is, I'm echoing her recommendations. And her recommendations are, she doesn't see how we could do it safely. And an intermural program, in her eyes, would be more cumbersome and problematic than even doing a regular schedule. And again, this is the way that our coaching staff uses it.
No, I was referring to field and track.
That's track and field, yes. And in terms of intermural soccer, there'd be no problem with that.
Smaller sport. Further discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
If Girls on the Run is offering this program in the spring, they've already advertised whatever, what is the difference between Girls on the Run and intermural track? Not if we kept track like on our kids, what would be the difference?
That would be more of a cross-country type of event with kids running for distance. Track and field is multiple events. It's a huge program. It's over 100 kids, over three grade levels, in several events. And as somebody alluded to, when an athlete has done one event, they're unsupervised, off to the side, or supervised by, you know, one person looking over a swarm of kids. It's just really hard to distance. The kids are really kind of combined. Whereas Girls on the Run would just be kind of training for distance. Cross-country was an event that we looked at this fall that is, it's just a lot different, the dynamics than track and field.
Yeah, Girls on the Run is two teams, less than 15 on a team. It's just very different. I think it's a different crowd. It's a different training, all of it, to your point.
Okay.
I think he said baseball. I mean, what I could do, Pepper, is propose a schedule. And the schedule I would propose, where we usually do a 15-game schedule, I would get together a schedule of half that or less with very close teams. Teams that are one town away, that wouldn't require a long bus ride, would be an easy commute for parents. And obviously, a very modified practice schedule as well.
My suggestion might be, here we are, February 9. Move forward. You've heard what the board has to say. Do what you can do and bring it to us at the next board meeting in March because the kids wouldn't start until April. And so that would still give you time to do what you need to do. Andrea, are you in here yet?
It is. I would like them to also bring forward some sort of proposition for the outdoor track and field. I totally disagree that it shouldn't be in there. It should be in there. There's well over 100 students that could be outside doing activities with an adequate number of coaches. I'm sorry, I just think it is so important. And I think there are many students that can benefit from all the different events that they can pursue in track and field.
Just a little bit of information to kind of add to that. There's talk of venues canceling, and we only use three venues. We use Winnicottet, we use Portsmouth, and we use Exeter. The information I've got from Portsmouth is they've requested no meets in Portsmouth. That brings our venues down to two. The high schools take first priority. Our meets aren't dual meets. We could look into doing dual meets, but it's finding a partner for the dual meet. The other thing that we could consider if we wanted to do something running is maybe flipping the seasons and looking to do a cross-country season, which would be a smaller sport. There's not as many kids who go out for that. And that's a lot more distant. Again, finding competition in the spring, that's probably something we wouldn't be able to do. We would probably have to do it as a Girls on the Run type of club type of thing. But I think that's a lot safer than having 120 kids congregate together. Even the dual meets are, they're big.
You said there's an athletic directors meeting Friday.
Friday, yes.
So I'm sure you'll get input from the other middle school ADs and find out what's going on and bring back to us.
Will do.
In the next board meeting.
Will do.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks, Dave. Thanks for staying in bridge.
Okay. So, working on my finances. We, I just started having the schools, all their products for the year. We only let them purchase their items for the first half of the year, not knowing where we were going to be. So they just started to order supplies and stuff that's needed now, again, for the second half. So once we get through that, I will start looking through what we have left for the year and see where our numbers are. Probably in the next two months, we'll have a really close idea. We have used our ESAR 1 grant completely, so now we can get our ESARs 2 grant. We haven't got, we have not received all the information as of yet on how it's going to be, but it is going to be grant. So we actually have to sit down, write what we want, and have it approved before we can do it. I think that it will be in the range of $384,000. So we'll be able to utilize that for the summer and maybe some ventilation. We really need to kind of see where our needs are the most and how we can utilize that money and then get it approved. But that has not come to us as of yet. It's still in the works, so we kind of have to wait for that. I have been working on the portal system in our infinite visions. And my goal this year is to have contracts made out of the system and sent to our portals so that our teachers will have it always. Once they have a contract, they'll be able to log in and always have it there for them. It's not going to be paper. They won't have to print it out. They can if they want to. That was my goal for this year. It is almost completed, so I'm working on that. I can definitely get you tent information for next meeting. However, I just, there's a few things that I need to probably look in with that, not just the amounts. Because every situation that happens, we, as a school, have to change, right? So a few years ago, we had shootings. And we changed policies and procedures and such for that situation. So now I don't think that it would be okay just to say, "Yes, we can put tents outside" without making sure our policies and procedures follow that. So I think it's definitely something we need to look at while we're looking at the cost. Do we, what kind of security would we need? Is it going to follow our policies? So I think we just have to kind of look at that too. Because, I mean, it's something that we did, we worked really hard on a couple of years ago to put a lot of those policies in place and change the way that we let people in our school, change the way recess was. There was a lot of things that got changed because of things that happened in surrounding communities with the shootings and that we put in place. So I'll just have to pull the policies and double check. I wasn't involved in that at the time, so I'm not 100% sure on what was written in the policy. So I just got to pull that and look at that stuff also.
And not to mention the money we spent on Alice that we are still spending.
For that. So it's just a concern for me. I know, I think it's great to be outside. The kids would love to be outside, but.
No, and I understand where you're coming from, but, you know, they do go outside for reasons.
Oh, they do.
So you know what?
Right.
But it's not a permanent fixture or classroom. They're in, they're out.
We're looking at one or two tents. We're not looking at nine tents out in one specific area. So I think we should look at everything.
Yeah. No, I just have to, yeah. I think that we just need to check our policies. That's all. I'm sure it's feasible. We might, maybe, we just have to change a policy. That's all I'm saying.
And it's also about the comfort level of the community. Are parents going to be comfortable having their children outside?
Right.
That's my point.
But, you know, I mean, things change too. I get that. So emotions change when things happen.
Problem because they have the inner court.
True.
Right.
I mean, does that ever get used? I mean, I know it hasn't been because, you know, it's hard.
Was in the fall.
Yeah, I think they were eating outside there.
But you could do classes out there.
It's a six feet apart in the court. But you're right.
And we still have the FROs, right?
I am good.
Okay.
Yes.
We have some policies, these first reads?
So the first one, this DADA is a first read. It's a new policy, which is on the references and verification. So that's a new policy.
Okay. We don't need a motion on that first read.
Nope.
And then GBCD?
That would be a new one. It's actually a revision.
So that's first read?
Yep. And then the GCO is a revision, which is Teacher Performance and Evaluation System.
GPCD is a long one.
Yeah, it is. It's five pages anyways. Yep. Yeah, several.
And GCO is first read?
Yep, it's new.
Okay, so look those over for the next meeting.
There is one more, though. There's DAF that was in there last month. It was the DAF one. And that, when you don't have in there, it was a 25-page policy.
Yes, that's right.
And that is a second read. And that's the Administration of Federal Grant Funds that I actually had, I did review with Dr. DeSylvan apton and Mariah, so that they are very well aware of the changes.
Motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
And what is it again?
It is DAF.
DAF, move by Frank, second and Pepper. Discussion. All those in favor? Ginny?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Five zero. Okay. We have some minutes from January 12. Public and non-public. Want to take them together? Frank, move, January 22nd, public and non-public. Second, Pepper. We are working hard tonight here.
January 12.
January 12. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And five zero for both. We need to go into non-public under RSA 91A:3, Roman numeral 2A. Roll call, Ginny?
Yep.
Andrea?
Aye.
Frank?